Calling to order, the Fall Wakefield Town Meeting. We have with us to kick things off, members of the Youth Council are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks you guys. Thank you. All right. What do I got here? Return of service. The warrant for the regular town meeting? Yeah, I got it. I think this is the original I have. So I'll give this to you. I, Constable Kevin Lopes, hereby certify that I have posted the regular town meeting warrant from November 19th, 2022. On October 26th, 2022, Kevin Lopes, Constable. Okay, first article. To see if the town will hear and accept a report of the fiscal year 2022 budget, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to accept a report of the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fall Town Meeting provides a wonderful opportunity for your team at Town Hall to reflect upon the events of the past year. Specifically, we evaluate how we reacted to unexpected occurrences, how accurate our forecasts proved, and more importantly, how Wakefield is prepared to answer future challenges. With increased inflation, supply chain issues, as well as labor shortages, we continue to be tested in almost every manner imaginable. However, I am pleased to report that due to the thoughtful development and implementation of sound financial policies by the Town Council, Finance Committee, and School Committee, Wakefield steadily remains on course for what continues to be a brighter future. Part of remaining on course is adherence to our quite dry, some would say boring, although I find them very exciting, financial policies, which include some guidelines such as limiting the use of non-recurring revenue sources in planning models, maintaining adequate reserves, and avoiding volatile revenue projections when balancing budgets. But it's equally important to note that Wall Street and its rating agencies now are also reviewing municipalities' commitment to quality of life issues. While in the past only pure financial columns were discussed at our bond rating meetings, now the analysis pivots to mental health services, especially in our police department, which was and remains way ahead of other area departments. Mental wellness commitments to our Health and Human Services Department, as well as commitment to affordable housing and green energy. The town's continued adherence to our financial policies is critical, but quality of life issues are now part of the rating rubic. And I am so pleased to report that Wakefield continues to maintain the highest available bond rating, AAA from Wall Street. This lofty designation saves hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on our capital projects, as we are able to borrow at lower interest rates. In fact, assuming a very modest spread of 20 basis points, or about a quarter of a point, between AAA and AA ratings, the town has saved approximately $950 in bond interest over our last two borrowings. I for one would much rather see that money in our pocket than on Wall Street's. As we discussed last month at the tri-board meeting, and in order to maintain that high bond rating and adequate reserves, we will certainly need to make sound and prudent budget decisions over the next few budget cycles in particular. I guess we have made it through the COVID storm, but the dark skies of inflation, supply chain issues, and post-pandemic necessities still linger. I assure you that your elected and appointed officials are up to the challenge. Today, we will request the town utilize 3.3 million in free cash to balance the fiscal year 2023 budget, continue our commitment to clean energy by granting our Municipal Gas and Light Department an easement for an energy park, which will effectively store the gathered energy from solar arrays on the proposed new vocational school and Wakefield High School. When operational, this park will serve as the backup power for each building, negating the expense of each building project completion of a separate emergency generator. We will request to amend a motion at the Spring Town Meeting, and perhaps most importantly, continue our collective commitment to assisting our seniors in continuing to match the state circuits breaker tax relief as part of the residential tax bills. I remain completely proud of your town employees who have answered all the challenges over the last fiscal year. I think we have emerged stronger and more efficient with much better systems of delivering services to the public. And on behalf of the Town Council, all municipal and school department employees, I wish to thank the townspeople for their continued support. But we do have a little business to do today. Because Wakefield continues to be a community where many wish to work, visit, and live, we have experienced another year of good new growth with a little over $1 million. Now, most town administrators would be thrilled with that number. I am not, as I was hoping that the new power line would be up and operational, allowing it to be taxed fully. That's state law, not us. So we adjusted our forecast to receive this at a later date, and with more mixed-use developments on the horizon, we project robust new growth over the foreseeable future. The revenue generated from local options meals and hotel tax has exceeded our predictions, generating $401,000 in meals tax and $406,000 in hotel tax, for a total of $807,000 last fiscal year. We had projected $640,000 for fiscal year '22 and had collected $559,000 in fiscal year 2021. A pre-COVID year is around $900,000, and we are on pace to achieve this this year, as we have collected close to $300,000 for the first quarter of fiscal year '23. So our free cash has been certified by the Department of Revenue as $6,668,204. Our long-range forecast indicates basically steady, but perhaps wobbly, free cash for the next few years. The value of the Comprehensive Stabilization Fund currently stands at over $3 million, double where we were in 2008, and the OPEB balance comes in at close to $26 million. I wish to thank the department heads, particularly John McCarthy, our town treasurer, Kevin Gill, our town accountant, and Sherri Dalton, my administrative assistant, for helping me put this booklet together. Of course, all our town employees, the superintendent of schools, Finance Committee, and especially the Town Council for their assistance and leadership this year. So again, in accordance with the requirements of the Home Rule Charter, I am extremely pleased to present the fiscal year 2022 report for the town of Wakefield. The report is included in the town meeting booklet, it's more towards the back, and has been on the town's website for some time. In a general sense, I'm very happy to report that all town departments managed to stay within or actually expend less than their respective appropriations. Certain departments have also encumbered funds from last year's budget for ongoing projects or bills which carried over into this fiscal year. Due to the efforts of department heads and employees, $1,108,416.78 was returned to the town last year, and as I mentioned, accordingly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certified free cash in the amount of $6,668,204 as of June 30th, 2022. Also, $2,659,413 was encumbered to be expended in fiscal year 2023. I'd like to address some of the specific department areas now. General Government, and you can follow it around in the book if you'd like, or it's online, if it's on your phone. General Government portion of the budget includes the Town Council, Accounting, IT, Treasurer, Legal, Tax Collector, Assessor, Town Clerk, Election Registration and Expense, Finance Committee, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals. General Government represents approximately 3% of our budget, or about 2.8 million. These departments returned a total of $56,725 to the town, or 2% of their operating budgets. Each individual department is broken down in the report. General Government also encumbered $85,143 to be used in fiscal year '23. The highlights here are $7,000 for audit in our accounting department, that timing-wise will occur in fiscal year '23, as well as $78,143 for two IT projects for time and attendance, software, and wireless access points. Both were delayed due to vendor availability. Section Two, Protection of Persons and Property. This area concerns police and fire protection, fire alarms and traffic lights, building department, animal control officer, and parking clerk. As a group, these budgets represent about 14% of our overall budget, or 13.3 million. These departments, despite a number of retirements and increased calls due to state of the economy, managed to return $39,216.67. And I'd just like to say that this is the majority of our first responders, and the Town Council and I, and I think the whole committee is very grateful for the hard work they do every day, 365, 24/7. Thank you very much to our men in blue in our fight department and the police and everybody. So thank you very much. Human Services. The Human Services area consists of the Council on Aging, which manages our senior center, the Health Department, the Rec Department, and the Veterans Department. These departments have returned $151,279.07 to the town on a budget of $903,000, or approximately 17%. The majority of that is located in, we're able to fund some of our positions in the Council on Aging Department via grant, and I'm great about getting that every year. And in the Veterans Department, just because we don't have as many veterans getting services as we had before, although we budget for it, it wasn't used. So that's where that money came from. Public Works, the other part of our first responder arms, and they also do a great job. The Public Works Department, despite their seemingly infinite calls for service, returned $20,986.70 to the town for normal operations, as well as, and I will remember this when the DPW director says that our snow budget is low, returned $111,052 on snow and ice operations. So, 111.52. Thank you. And I applaud the hard work and results offered by our DPW. We also encumbered $626,000 for ongoing capital projects. And mainly, these are projects that although funded in one fiscal year, couldn't get completed for whatever reason. Permitting parts, you know, contractor availability. So when you go through that list, you know, $78,000, 62 of that is for the floral way, which didn't finish up until this year, pickleball and stormwater upgrades in that area, $69,400 for roof and HVAC repairs, $8,300 for sidewalk repairs. These are all under the Purchase of Services section. In Materials and Supplies, we encumbered $8,466 in forestry and parks, and this was for a bobcat attachment that did not come in on time, as well as some repair materials for baseball diamonds, clay that came in late, and we certainly aren't going to pay for it until we get it. Under Capital Outlay in the DPW section, $159,000 was for ongoing ADA transition planning and GIS data development, as well as $93,000 for back-ordered vehicles. The Forestry and Parks Division carried forward $84,611, primarily for the Woodville Playground that is completed, but was completed in July, and the Buildings Division, and the scoreboard at the field over there. And the Buildings Division encumbered $125,000 for ongoing projects at the Greenwood Fire Station, water fountains that were on back order, imagine that, something on back order today, and ongoing window work at Town Hall. The Water and Sewer Enterprise accounts also ended the year in the black, returning 5% of their budgets of $444,528.90. The encumbrances were for infrastructure improvements and rehabilitation, as well as supply chain issues. And that is why they were delayed. Education. The education portion of the budget includes the School Department, Library, and Vocational School. These departments all completed the year within budget and returned $21,945.12 to the town, and carried forward $1,946,415. Any questions on the education portion should be directed to the superintendent at the conclusion of the presentation. The remainder of the budget line items consist of non-department or unclassified expenses, particularly in the area of insurance. As a group, this section returned $325,236 to the town, the bulk of which was from the Reserve Fund, which is under the control of the Finance Committee, and unemployment. We pay unemployment as we go, so we pay on claims that are filed, so although we budget for it, we may not use it. We hope we don't use it. And again, as I've said, the last, I guess, 10 years, at least, the biggest return to the town occurred in the area of group health insurance, returning $492,028.75 to the town, as the mix of the specific health plans chosen by employees and retirees produced lower costs. And this is an absolutely great job done by our HR department, as they work really person by person, individual by individual, to fit their lifestyles to the best and most cost-effective health plan. As a whole, Wakefield has kept the cost of health insurance at an increase of less than 6% over the previous year, and in fact, over the last five years, we have held the line on health insurance averaging about a 2% to 3% increase. And I think these numbers stack up pretty good locally and nationally. So kudos to Amy Forziati and Karen Dusset for their hard work. And I say this every year, I don't anticipate larger returns like this again, and they always prove me wrong, so that's a challenge again for next year. Thank you. For fiscal year 2022, the following amounts were transferred from the Reserve Fund: $12,200 for Board of Appeals costs, $4,000 for Conservation Commission, $9,000 for insurance premiums, $7,000 for legal expenses and damages, $20,000 for Medicare, $40,000 for vocational schools, $25,000 for the Town Council budget, and that was for the charging stations that you see around town, $1,000 for veteran salaries, veteran agent salaries, $9,800 for workers' compensation, and $272,000 was actually returned to the town to go into our free cash. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the group this morning, and this concludes my report.
Any discussion on the motion under Article One? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to accept the town report as just described by Mr. Mayo. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such free cash as may be in the Treasury, or any part thereof, in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period ending June 30th, 2023, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $3,300,000 in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year 2023.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this article is to allow $3,300,000 of free cash to be used in setting the fiscal year 2023 tax rate. This amount is necessary to offset the budget to enable the town to be within the allowable tax levy under Proposition Two and a Half. As you may be aware, our submission to the State Department of Revenue reflects very conservative use of non-tax levy income in order to be in compliance with the DOR stringent parameters, as well as carefully positioning us in the light of any unexpected downturns that could happen during the year. This conservative revenue calculation, as well as the very prudent efforts and results of our department heads in the managing of their budget, has led to a consistent growth in our reserves. In fact, as I stated in Article One, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certified our free cash to be $6.6 million on June 30th, and after the use of $3,300,000 to offset this budget, we will have a free cash balance of approximately $3.4 million, a comprehensive stabilization account of $3.2 million, as well as $300,000 in our sped stabilization account. Our financial policy, as adopted by the Town Council and Finance Committee, establishes the goal of maintaining free cash balances between 3% and 8% of our operating budget. We remain within that policy, miles ahead of where we were 15 years ago, and the Town Council recommends favorable action on Article Two.
Mr. Sullivan, Finance Committee.
And the Finance Committee recommends favorable action as well.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Two? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to accept the outline that Mr. Mayo just gave you. All in favor? All opposed? Article Three, to see if the town will vote to amend the appropriation under Article Two of the Annual Town Meeting of 2022, to read as follows: That the town vote to raise and appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $2,100,000, and transfer the account to the Sewer Department Capital Outlay Account, the sum of $875,000 from the Water Retained Earnings Account, to the Waste Department Capital Outlay Amount, to carry out the purposes of this article, to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to amend the appropriation under Article Two of the Annual Town Meeting of 2022, to read as follows: That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $2,100,000, and transfer the amount of $862,000 from the Sewer Retained Earnings Account to the Sewer Department Capital Outlay Account, and the sum of $875,000 from the Water Retained Earnings Account to the Water Department Capital Outlay Account, carry out the purposes of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this article is to correct a misstatement by the maker of the motion back on May 16th of 2022, and he's right here. The funding source for the capital expenditures should have been from sewer retained earnings, not receipts, and the funding source for the water capital expenditures should have been from water retained earnings, not receipts. The technical error was picked up by our town accountant, once again proving how valuable he is to the town. Thank you, Kevin. And this article also proves what my wife has been telling me for years, that I am not infallible. So there you go. This correction does not affect any of the capital items, approved in May, but does provide for the correct payment source and will not affect the water and sewer rates as voted by the Town Council in June.
Mr. Sullivan, do you have any editorial on this one? Come on, you got a chance here.
Well, I didn't write it, so that's a good thing. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Three? There being no discussion, the motion is to revise the appropriation under Article Two of the Annual Town Meeting, as set forth so graciously by Mr. Mayo. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Four, I'm not going to read the whole thing, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the town, on behalf of the town, to petition a legislature based on the Act authorizing Wakefield to establish a means-tested senior citizen property exemption. And I think Mr. Mayo will explain, but just procedurally, this is really a sunset clause, so we're just renewing an existing program. Is that fair, Mr. Mayo?
With one little increase to help out the taxpayers, which our assessor will explain as we go forward. But, Mr. Moderator, the motion is that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature to enact special legislation as described in this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you very much. In April of 2018, I was privileged to present to this body the Wakefield Senior Tax Relief Program. After we passed this very important tax relief, your team was able to obtain approval from the state legislature. However, the legislature would not make the relief permanent, so we are here again to reaffirm what we wisely implemented three years ago. As I stated then, one of the priorities of the Town Council is to help our valued seniors remain in their homes. These are the people who set the strong foundation upon which Wakefield is built, and in an era of rising costs and prices, some accommodations are needed to help make remaining in Wakefield a little bit easier for some. Thanks to the very hard work of Victor Santinello, our Director of Assessments, we have crafted a Home Rule petition that would request authorization of the state legislature, again, to extend the state senior tax circuit breakup to the real estate taxes paid by our seniors. For those who qualify for the state program, we will now offer an amount that could actually match up to 150% of the state circuit breaker credit, dependent upon what an individual receives there. And it's also somewhat dependent upon what the state legislature does, as there is some interesting discussions going on over there right now. Over the first three years of this program, we have granted relief to an average of 225 taxpayers or taxpayer entities per year. Mr. Moderator, I would like now to introduce Victor Santinello, our very talented assessor, to speak in more detail about the state circuit breaker and the Wakefield program.
Thank you, Steve, and good morning, Town Meeting. In order to qualify for our local exemption, we based it off the state senior circuit breaker income tax credit. And in order, when you file your income taxes for the prior calendar year, you have to be 65 years of age, a Massachusetts resident, obviously file Massachusetts income taxes. There are income limitations. A single individual can earn more than $62,000, $78 for head of household, and $93 for married, filing jointly. If you're homeowner, the basic part of receiving this, if you meet the other criteria from the state, is paying at least 10% of your income towards local property taxes and one half the water and sewer. When you meet that, my office basically will have an application period. We put this in the newspaper, on the website. We also include an insert with the tax bills that are due in payable August 1st to remind folks to come on in and file. Time to file is August and September, with a hard cutoff date the end of September, because we need those numbers to calculate the tax rate. And what we've done the first three years was match whatever an individual receives from the state. This translated into a savings for qualified seniors of about 15% off their income taxes. The Home Rule petition we did three years ago has a sunset clause, so we're required every three years to come before Town Meeting to renew it, so we can continue offering this valuable tax relief for seniors and keep them vibrant and participating in our community. The only change we're recommending, the Board of Assessors, this year, is giving us an ability to go to 150%. Last year's maximum award was 1170. At 150%, the amount will be 1755 off the taxes, which translates into roughly about a 20% to 23% savings. We requested this because we were considering raising it, but the state also has some bills that may call to double tax relief. If the state doubles it to, say, $2,400, we obviously don't want to go 150% of that, because the cost of this is borne by the other residential taxpayers. And the average cost over the three years has been about $26 on the average single-family tax bill, again, to provide approximately 225 seniors a year tax relief to help them age in place. But I'm, most of all, I'm really thrilled to be here for another renewal of this, because it does mean so much. The cards and letters that we receive from individuals who take the time just to say thank you for giving them an opportunity to receive this type of tax relief is really near and dear to what we do. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, FinCom.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Four? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to reassert the program as described by Mr. Santinello. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on Article Five, pay attention to the program. What this article is, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Town Council to grant a perpetual exclusive easement for no consideration to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department for a one-acre portion of a certain town land shown on the Wakefield Assessors map. And that is then described in the program, and it's to construct and operate a microgrid form of energy park, which would include, but not necessarily limited to, battery energy storage, solar generation, natural gas, and related equipment. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town vote to authorize the Town Council to grant perpetual exclusive easement for no consideration to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, WMGLD, on a one-acre portion of certain town-owned land shown on Town of Wakefield Assessors Map, Number 40A, as Parcel 010-26A. Title reference Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds Book 8526, Page 287. The property, as shown on a plan of land entitled "Easement Area Sketch Plan," Wakefield, Mass., dated August 3rd, 2022, drawn by Thomas F. Winslow, PLS, Hayes Engineering, Inc., which planners on fire with the Town Clerk to construct and operate a microgrid in the form of an energy park, which would include, but not necessarily be limited to, battery, energy storage, solar generation, natural gas generation, and related equipment; and two, to authorize the Town Council to petition the state legislature to permit the grant of said easement under Article 97 of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the light department will be making the presentation. Peter Dion.
Peter Dion, and he's with Mr. Poulsen, is that correct? Are not town residents, I will entertain a motion to allow them to speak to this body?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? You're up, fellas. Oh, and Mr. McCarthy gracing us with his presence today.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael McCarthy, living on Morningside Road, Wakefield. I represent the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Just in terms of context, because Pete Dion, the general manager, will be making the detailed presentation. For context sake, we're looking for an easement over a portion, a one-acre portion of a six-acre parcel owned by the town. The parcel was acquired in nineteen fifty-five. At that time, at town meeting, the FinCom proposed a vote, which was adopted, which was to pay two thousand dollars for the six-acre parcel and to accept the land for quote-unquote playground purposes. So, we appear here tonight to request an easement over a one, approximately one acre of that six-acre parcel, so that we can construct the, the micro-grid, the energy park. So we need to vote for the easement, and we need a vote that would authorize the town to seek a home rule, to file a home rule petition to allow the grant of the easement, because technically that's a conveyance, and it falls under Article Ninety-seven of the Amendments to the State Constitution, because it was originally accepted for playground purposes. So, the vote, the second part of the vote would authorize us to proceed to the state legislature for a vote of approval under, under Article Ninety-seven. As a part of that process, we will be identifying not only one substation, which is being decommissioned, the Burn Substation, will be turned into a park. That's about eight thousand square feet. But we intend to replace square foot for square foot, the one-acre parcel, either in the form of potential parkland or conservation, preservation land. So as a part of the process of going to the state, we'll be going to the Conservation Commission in Wakefield, working with them to help identify appropriate land. With that, Mr. Moderator.
I defer to Mr. Dion. Dion to go into the details.
Mr. Mullen, just to, just to help me out here, there's one vote under this article, correct? It's not a split vote? Just two elements? Mr. McCarthy, Attorney McCarthy was describing two elements, one vote, correct? Okay, thank you. Mr. Dion. Dion.
Thank you. I think we'll just start briefly with a quick informational video that we helped prepare for the town. Thank you for having us here today. I think it's an exciting project. So we'll, we'll start with an informational video, and then I'll go through a handful of slides quickly to kind of give more information, and then we can answer questions.
Hello, my name is Pete Dion. I'm the general manager of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Today, I'm here to share with you some information about an exciting project we're working on in conjunction with the Northeast Regional Vocational High School and the Wakefield Memorial High School. Over the next few minutes, you'll learn more about this project. They'll provide cost savings to our ratepayers, environmental benefits to the region, and educational opportunities for the students at both high schools.
The Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department is working on a project called Energy Park. It will utilize a variety of resources to service the energy needs of both schools, including solar, utility-grade battery storage technology, and a natural gas generator for emergency backup. The WMGLD will manage, own, and operate the Energy Park with ratepayers in mind, keeping energy costs low and providing significant environmental benefits in preparation for the future. Northeast Metro Tech and the proposed high school will have all-electric heating and cooling systems. The Energy Park project includes installing solar panels on the roofs of both schools. With the output economically serving the electrical needs of both schools, any excess solar energy not used by the schools will be stored at the Energy Park's five-megawatt battery storage system. The battery storage system will enable the schools and the ratepayers to reap the benefits provided by peak shaving and effectively manage energy costs, not only at the schools, but throughout the community. The project will also include the installation of electric vehicle charging stations capable of powering ten vehicles at each school. The Energy Park will include a natural gas generator that will be used as an emergency power source and a capacity resource when needed. As a result, the two diesel-fired emergency generators that would normally be required will be eliminated, saving each school approximately one-point-two million dollars in construction costs and providing additional environmental benefits. The Energy Park will help the WMGLD promote electrification, reduce carbon emissions, maintain low electric rates, and move forward in meeting the state's net-zero twenty-fifty goal. In addition to energy management, the WMGLD will enhance educational opportunities for students who will learn about energy management systems, solar arrays, and carbon reduction technologies. The Energy Park would be built on town-owned land on Hemlock Road, which will require an easement to be granted by town meeting. The plan has received the support of officials at both schools, as well as several town departments and committees, including the town administrator, town council, DPW, and Wakefield state representatives. Any trees that will need to be removed as part of the construction of the Energy Park will be replaced as part of WMGLD's comprehensive vegetation management and tree replacement program. The design has incorporated a twenty-five-foot natural vegetation buffer in front of the property on Hemlock Road.
Thank you for taking the time to learn more about this exciting project. If you have any questions, please reach out to us at energypark@wmgld.com.
Thank you. I just wanted to share a few more slides over, to provide a little bit more background information for the project.
Hey, hey, while we're waiting, FinCom. Come on, we're at a record pace here, let's not slow it up.
Yeah.
So you need me to fill airtime, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right. So Sully, so Sully, what's going on?
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. You all set?
I hope so. If I can't advance it here, if you could just advance some. We had some really cool slides, too.
Do you know what's on these slides?
I do.
Well, then why don't you start talking about it? Yeah.
Who said we need to see the slides?
There we go. All right. So again, we have a unique opportunity here in Wakefield, where we have two high schools basically on the same street, which creates a unique opportunity to help with the electrical infrastructure for both schools. For whatever reason, there we go. I'm going to skip over this slide and come back to it at the end. I don't know if you're advancing from up above, if you could, there we go. So the first thing is that this opportunity came upon us because of the fact that the, the tech is a little bit further along than anything we would do at the high school. And obviously with significant budget constraints, it's much cheaper for them to go with gas heat to start. The problem with that is that obviously gas heat for a project that's going to be built for at least the next fifty years has a significant environmental impact. So what we've done here is show an analysis. There you go. We have all this technical stuff, but I forgot to turn the clicker on, thank you. So the, so what we're doing is we're promoting electrification. The most important thing to understand from this slide is that, on the left side, without the Energy Park, that blue column is all about the gas that it would use in addition to the electric that that school would use. And this is a, this is a chart showing the carbon, carbon metric tons of carbon that would be generated into the environment on an annual basis. So as you can see, the, the carbon contribution for the tech is extremely high if it were on gas heat. On the right-hand side, if we're able to heat, power their electric heating and cooling with electricity, we're actually dropping about thirteen-hundred megawatt metric tons right out at the outset. And the other thing that's important to remember about this slide, if you're aware of the law that was passed last year by the state that electric infrastructure needs to be net-zero by twenty-fifty. So those yellow bars on both sides will be shrinking even more over the next twenty years as we move towards that net-zero goal. So the carbon output of the yellow portion is going to be dwindling down to, to near zero over the next twenty to thirty years. So that leaves the carbon footprint for the tech at, you know, very minimal as we look out into the future, which is part of our net-zero twenty-fifty goals. So how are we going to fund this project? The project has four, four real layers to it. With any project that we do in Wakefield, whether it's a, a school or a, or a commercial building, there is a contribution from the, the developer, and that's for the infrastructure to tie into us. It's already in the budget, but there, there, each, each school would have to contribute approximately five-hundred thousand dollars towards that infrastructure to tie into our system. The, the rest of it, we will leverage some ratepayer dollars as an investment for the long-term benefit of this. And we are looking at several sort, ratepayer dollars, but we're also the opportunity to have a payback from a capacity resource that we'll discuss in a second. Based on that capacity resource, we estimate that we'll have about a seven-year payback on the investment that the ratepayers will be making. And we're also going to be working to leverage as much as possible. We're in this post-COVID era, as Steve said, we're in a unique opportunity that there is a lot of federal and state money that may be available to help that. And as we develop this project, we will be reaching out for as much of that money as possible. There's a lot of grants that are available. We've already been awarded a, a first grant for the educational purposes by the American Public Power Association. They recognize this project is very unique, and so they have already awarded us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for developing the educational programs as part of this project. Where does the real savings come for the ratepayers? It really comes from what's called the peak savings. What we're able to do is run the park like we do our existing resources. Currently, we have a battery on Farm Street, and we have generators on Salem Street. Those resources are used to curb our peak requirements. By doing that, we're, we've already been able, over the past three years, to save ratepayers approximately five-point-nine million dollars. That source of revenue comes from the fact that we take less from the grid by using these resources, and it lowers everybody's costs. So by controlling our requirements of the grid, we get a payback on that in terms of avoided cost. Again, to date, on the resources we already have, we've saved approximately six million dollars. Going forward, we anticipate that the savings for the, the Energy Park would be about approximately one-point-five million dollars per year, which would mean that we would have approximately a seven-and-a-half-year payback. The Energy Park itself would be located on Hemlock Road between the two proposed schools. How do we select this location? There was a lot of work that went into looking at Hemlock Road as a whole. We needed to find a location from an infrastructure perspective that would actually be between the two schools, obviously reducing the overall cost, because we need to be physically in between the two. We were looking at as much as possible at non-forested sites, but there's very limited land that's non-forested that doesn't already have another use. Obviously, we're going to be into two, potentially two major construction projects going on in semi-overlapping timeframes. So that area is going to be extremely busy, and parking is a huge issue. There is one park across from Lander Green Field that's parking area, but during the construction of these two projects, parking is already a premium. If you've ever been up there on a school day, there's really no other room for parking up there. So we really couldn't use that parking lot. And if you look at, I'll give an overview in a minute of, of what the area looks like. But, so we needed, and we also need to make sure we're constructing these projects and keeping the existing schools open. We have to have the park built when the tech is occupied, because we're going to be, the, the Energy Park is what's providing their emergency backup. So we can't wait for the tech to be finished and they tear down the other school. We need to have the park ready to go the day that the school opens, or we, we actually provide no benefit to them. And again, this, the location is centrally located and closer, in terms of topography. We did a complete survey of, of the entire area, and we needed to identify a location that was as flat as possible to minimize environmental impact and to minimize the construction costs of the Energy Park. So here's looking at Hemlock Road. This is just an electrical one line. Basically, over time, the, the plan right now is that there's existing overhead infrastructure that comes up Hemlock Road to the area of where the Energy Park currently is. As we construct the, the first phase of it, which would feed the new tech, that area will be all undergrounded. As we move forward to looking towards the new high school, even a renovated high school, that work on the lower part of Hemlock Road out to Farm Street will ultimately be moved underground as well. So at the end of the project, over the next four to five years, as both schools are either redeveloped or newly constructed, what we're looking at is having all of Hemlock Road go underground, greatly improving their reliability as well. In terms of vegetation management, I know there's a lot of concern about the, the, the trees that we would have to remove as part of this, this one-acre parcel. We've really, we did a detailed survey of every tree in, in the site. As we mentioned in the video, we're looking at a twenty-five-foot natural buffer on the front. And then we are looking at, we actually counted how many trees we physically need to remove. It's a hundred and twenty-eight trees. We will actually be replacing all of those trees as part of our, our tree replacement program that we have with the MLD. But we understand that that's not fully the requirement. We also need to have offsetting land. We are work, we would have preferred to be able to have a lot of time for this, but unfortunately, the window is relatively short. And if we, if we miss this town meeting and the opportunity to approve this easement, it's not an opportunity that will come up again in the spring, because, A, we need to be ready for the, the tech when they, when they open up in twenty-five. And the issue we have is that the lead times on equipment are, as we've talked about in other articles, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty weeks. So some of the things we're going to need would greatly be impacted, and we actually wouldn't be able to procure it. So that's one reason it would go away. The second is that the, the tech is moving down a path that they need to finish this project, and they need to make a decision about whether they would be able to go electric or they would have to go back to gas. And we, we have to actually make a commitment to them that we will be able to provide the Energy Park. And again, so we will identify other land in the next phase of this. As Mike said, before we go, before the cons come, we will, we recognize we will have to identify another parcel that will offset the impact of the, the one acre that we're taking at Hemlock Road. As Mike also said, we've already identified one parcel that we actually currently own, which is the Burn Substation, which is on Ballister off of Albion Street. It's a commercial property, you can see on the right. It's a four KV substation that we have just actually physically retired the electrical use of that right now. So our board has voted to allow us to convert that to a green space and a park as part of this project. Again, as Mike said, it only occupies eighty-five hundred square feet, so that's a piece of the solution. But it's a solid piece, because again, what we're looking at is taking an industrial application and converting it to a green space application. So that's, it's a good part of it. But again, as we noted, we're also recognizing the fact that we're going to have to identify additional land that would be preserved in a, in a different way. So again, this is an overview of the Energy Park itself, identifying the, the twenty-five-foot natural buffer. And I think what, what you see on the bottom half is where the batteries would be, the generator would be in the back. And again, we've tried to work hard to make sure we minimize the environmental impact of the project. I just wanted to go back to the, the first slide, which was the, the, the pros and the cons of this. A yes vote would actually allow us to maintain, um, low electric rates. As I said in one of the slides, the payback to the town and to the ratepayers is on the capacity savings. We're going to be able to save approximately one point five million dollars a year in capacity costs, which is a portion of your bill. When you look at your bill, you have a customer charge, a distribution charge, and then you have an energy charge. Within that energy charge is the cost of capacity. And so the work we've done over the past several years with the battery and the generator we currently have will be supplemented by a project like this. So from a ratepayer perspective, this is a positive. We would also reduce carbon emissions by in the area of over two points, six, twenty-six hundred metric tons, if you factor in both schools, but immediately like about thirteen hundred metric tons per year. That's significant. And we understand that the impact of cutting down some trees does have a significant impact on the environment, but the, the environmental impact overall, especially as we move towards that net zero goal in that first chart and that yellow shrinks, the, the footprint of this school will be significant. We're going to obviously reduce the, the construction cost for both schools by about approximately one point two million. The way we're doing that is by removing the need for them to have diesel generators at each school. One of the benefits, as I said at the beginning, is that these two buildings are very close to each other, and it's a unique opportunity for us to provide the emergency backup to both buildings in a central location. That's not something we could normally do, but the energy park is able to do that. And again, we're able to do it natural gas, which is better than diesel, obviously. So there, there's one benefit right there. And also, we're able to put batteries as a supplemental resource so that they won't have to have individual generators at each building. So the primary emergency supply to the schools will start with the batteries and then move to generation if it was a longer-term outage. Obviously, the educational opportunities, as I mentioned, are significant. This is, um, basically a technology right now that is going to be beneficial to everybody. This is a unique project. I think if you looked at, uh, the award we got from the APPA, uh, they, they describe, and they, they're dealing with projects from all fifty states. They said this is extremely unique project, and again, we're lucky that it is, you know, here in Wakefield. Uh, I, I, I really need to thank Dave and Vinnie McMahon and our team that, you know, there's been a lot of work on this project since day one. We, the request to serve the, the tech with gas started about a little over a year ago, and we've been working very closely with them to try to make sure that this project goes all-electric for many reasons as I've cited, but it's, it's a very detailed and integrated project. There's a lot of pieces that we brought together to make this work. Obviously, as part of this, we are including, um, ten, uh, EV charging locations at each school. One of the things that's important to understand about the, the state building requir, um, school, state school building program is that they require each school to be solar-ready and EV-ready, but they don't require any of that to be installed. As part of this project, we're going to be able to put solar on each roof of each school, regardless of where it is, and ten EV chargers, and we're doing that as part of this project right from the outset. Again, that's part of the investment that will be paid back with the capacity savings. The results of a no vote is unfortunately, we're going to have to cancel the project from a timing perspective. We also, uh, we will miss out on some of the opportunities for the energy savings for our ratepayers. We're obviously going to have a dramatic environmental impact. Basically, the, the tech would end up having to go back to gas, which would add about thirteen hundred metric tons of carbon each year. Obviously, there's an impact on both schools in terms of their construction costs because each school is going to have to now put a separate diesel generator in, which is suboptimal. The rooftop solar, as I said, would be installed immediately, uh, as opposed to at some point potentially in the future for each school. And the, uh, educational opportunities of this unique project would also be missed by, by, again, the students at both schools. I think we can open up to comment or any question.
You're done.
I'm done.
Good. Okay. All right. Sorry, as we're rolling along there. All right. Is there any comment on the motion under Article Five?
Is this working?
Oh, Planning Board, right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot that, right. Planning Board? Mr. Knoll? Come on down. Okay, we got a duo.
Hi, good morning, Theo Knoll. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I want to introduce Jim Hogan, the Vice Chair, who will speak to our, uh, our review.
Jim Hogan, as Theo said, uh, Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light had to come before the Planning Board as part of this process. We voted unanimously to recommend favorable action on the basis of the ratepaying, ratepayers' savings, the savings to the schools that were detailed, as well as the environmental mitigations identified, and the carbon savings on an ongoing basis. So again, Planning Board voted unanimously, recommended favorable action.
Thanks. Any comment on the motion under Article Five?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Christine Ryu. I live on Woodland Road in Wakefield. And I'll just say, I'm uncomfortable saying, but, uh, my background is I have a Master's in Environmental Engineering and a PhD in Environmental Health Science. So I took a lot of time looking at this warrant. And one thing I'd like to have clarified, if you could, um, is this a vote on the energy park? Or is this a vote on an easement for Article ninety-seven land? Because I think the issues are getting conflated here.
Mr. Mullin? No, Mr. Dionne, no, no, Dionne, no, no, wait. Mr. Mullin? Can't imagine you didn't cover any part of it so far.
Uh, Tom Mullin, I'm the Town Council. There are two parts to this article. One is to approve a, the grant of an easement, but because we can't do that unless the legislature votes the Article ninety-seven approval, the second half is to authorize the Town Council, CIL, to request such special legislation from Beacon Hill. Does that answer your question?
No.
Then I don't understand the question.
Are we voting on the energy park project, of which I fully support the concept of an energy park? Or are we truly voting on taking town land and giving over an easement for this project?
Well, the grant of the easement is for a specific purpose.
Okay.
Okay? So, and we state the purpose in the article, which is this energy park. But we are doing legally two things, approving the grant of easement and seeking the Article ninety-seven authorization that would allow us to record it.
Okay. Do I have a few more minutes to make some comments?
Sure you do, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. The citizens of Wakefield are being asked to vote on a consequential change in the use of town land without being given the information we need to make an informed vote. I'm conflicted because the energy park and microgrid are good projects, but, um, this change in land use will involve the loss of natural resources, trees, and land that has been designated core habitat, as shown on the biomap for Wakefield. The biomap is something that's produced as a collaboration of state agencies, Fish and Game and Fisheries and, um, and, um, Nature Conservancy. So core habitat promotes the long-term persistence of rare species, species of conservation concern, natural communities, intact ecosystems. So it's not just the number of trees we're looking at, but that the land we are considering transferring is forest core habitat. Includes intact forests that provide important habitat for natural woodland species, bird species, and it helps maintain ecological processes. So I think that the land, and I know that the land that we're looking at transferring in this warrant has high natural resource value, and as stewards of the lands of Wakefield, knowing as we do that the loss of forested land at this time of climate change is not something to do without serious consideration, I ask that the Article ninety-seven law, which requires a petition to the General Court to authorize disposition of this land, um, and that the petition be accompanied, it says a petition be accompanied by an alternatives analysis demonstrating other options have been explored and no feasible or substantially equivalent alternative exists. This analysis is to be submitted to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs and subject to public notice and comment. I haven't seen an alternatives analysis. I've seen a, a slide on a PowerPoint, but I haven't seen a report, okay? It also requires that identif, that the people putting forth the petition identify replacement land in a comparable location, and that is of equal or greater natural resource value, acreage, and monetary value as determined by an appraisal of the fair market value or value in use, and a copy of the appraisal of that land. I haven't seen any of that. So who will conduct these analyses to ensure that the alternatives have been evaluated and the replacement land is of, uh, equal or greater natural resource value? Is the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, um, experts in this? They're experts in energy matters. They're not experts in environmental matters. And who within the town will judge this? I'm, I'm being asked to levy, to give my vote before the Town Conservation Commission has looked at this. We had the Finance Committee, we had the Planning Department. Why hasn't the Conservation Commission looked at this first? They're the experts on this. They can deliberate on these matters and then give their opinion to us before we give a vote. It's not a light matter to just give a vote at town meeting before we have all of the information. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I think there's one question in there, and it's a very simple one to answer. Who will conduct this alternative study? Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael McCarthy, again, on behalf of the Lake Department. The, uh, chapter nine, Article ninety-seven anticipates that EOEA, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, will conduct a review. As part of that review and the policy, so EOEA would then make recommendations to the legislature and/or the governor as to whether or not to move forward or to sign, um, the Home Rule petition. So this is all in the context of the Home Rule petition, which we can't do until we get an Article ninety-seven vote. As a part of that, EOA, EOEA review and policy, it requires, uh, the policy requires that, um, we go to the Conservation Commission and present, um, our, uh, proposal of how to offset the, um, the use of the land. So as I've said, and as Mr. Dionne has said, we not only count the Burns Substation conversion, but we will also identify, um, the land to replace. And we'll do that on a, on a square foot by square foot basis, not even counting the Burns Substation. So all that would be an EOEA review. That happens after the article gets referred to the state, which requires this vote in order to move that process forward.
Mr. Scott?
Peter Scott, twenty-five Avon Street. Notwithstanding the previous discussion, if there were a way to pound some common sense into the decision-makers at the tech concerning the location proposed currently for their new school and to get them off the top of the mountain and away from all that existing forest and put it down on existing flat area, um, would that impact your choice of site?
Briefly?
No, because, again, we were looking at a location that has to be in between the two schools because of the construction. Uh, again, this isn't a vote about where the tech will go. There, that process is separate from ours, but we really need to be in between the two schools. And actually, uh, it would eliminate the possibility of any kind of work, uh, even close to that. So the reality is that, no, there's not an opportunity to look at existing open space. We, we still would have to be physically between the two schools.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fanning, Wakefield resident, and my question has to...
Where do you, where do you live?
Four Pheasant Wood Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, my question has to do with, um, uh, the sort of, uh, pressure and insistence that we need to, the public needs to, to vote, um, today. Otherwise, the plan may be canceled. So our, it seems like our choice is either vote yes for this today, otherwise this can never happen. And, um, I would like some further clarification about why that's necessary, given that the, uh, opening date or the planned opening date for the new vocational school is in late twenty-twenty-five, so three years from now. So why is it necessary that we make a decision today, um, uh, for this rather than having more time to, um, to learn about this project?
Mr. Mullin? This is more of a legal question, don't you think? No? Can you answer this? Can you answer it briefly?
I could try.
Thank you. Is it on a slide somewhere?
No, no slide.
Okay, just checking.
Uh, so the reason for that i- is, is twofold. First, uh, the tech, although they, they're going to be opening in twenty-five, they need to have their plan, and obviously they, their heating source identified well before that, which is basically now. They, they don't have time to flip back and forth. So if we don't at least show them that we're moving forward with this project, they, they'll have to go back to their gas source of heat. That's item one. The second item is obviously to build an energy park. We're, we're, there's a lot of huge pieces of equipment that are needed, that need to be ordered now. Again, as I mentioned, we talked about the fact that, um, you know, supply chains are very, very tight, and we are looking at, you know, some of the pieces are, have like a hundred and fifty-week lead times. If we don't order the equipment sometime this spring, early this spring, we, we won't even have the equipment in time for the construction.
Thanks.
Hi, Rob Weddick, twenty-nine Walden Road. There's been a lot of discussion about a piece of land. Could we please see a map? I don't understand. And the map that was shown was for, had showed an electrical grid. So where is it in relationship to, uh, Landegrin Field and the, uh, guardhouse? I'd appreciate that. Oh, that's good. Thank you.
You're up.
Hi, Eleanor Axelrod, nineteen Sheffield Road. I want to thank, um, WGMLD for taking the time to show us this presentation today. However, this project has been in the works for years, and I'm a little bit puzzled why this information has not been made readily available for voters in this town to get more information, to understand exactly where this park will be sited, and to understand it is the loss of forest as you enter the Breakheart Reservation complex. We learned for the first time on Wednesday night, after it was announced on Tuesday's Wakefield item that a public forum would be held, that the anticipated project cost would be twelve million dollars to achieve these savings. There was a lot of useful information, and I believe people in town need time to reflect and digest this information. For instance, how do we go between saving one point two million for diesel generator to spending twelve million on an energy park? There must be some happy medium? Other schools are putting in natural gas generators. Nobody's contemplating diesel generators in this day and age. So I'm puzzled why this is the worst-case scenario. I also want to point out that less than twenty percent of alternative replacement land has been identified to offset this acre, and it is a substation that is already degraded and in no way of similar ecological value to native forest. That is all. I hope people will take this vote seriously. And if you think that it's acceptable to show this information at the last minute for a very consequential vote that will take away the use of this land from our children for years to come, if that is the best use of the land, so be it. But I feel that this town is entitled to more information and to reflect on the economics and the land use proposals of this arrangement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Garen, forty-six Valley Street. I had a question about the location. Is that the same site that the town was soliciting bids for a hockey rink complex at some point?
Steve, do you know that?
Yes, that was pretty much the same site.
So it would replace...
Up the hill, maybe more uphill.
It would replace the potential for that?
We got no bids a few years ago, so...
Okay, just, just a question, thanks.
Good afternoon, sorry. My name is Bob Brooks, 7 June Circle. Since 1996, I resided next to the Majestical Historical Forest, and really did not realize how lucky I am. For the past 24 months, I have read article after article about our forest in New England and those here in Wakefield. Each article has reinforced the benefits of the trees that surround us in our daily lives. It warns us of dangers in the future if we do not protect our trees now. From catastrophic storms and record-breaking heat to the decline of bird and insect populations, a day does not pass without news about the dire ecological and economic effects of climate change. One such article I read in October by Kavita MacLeod, an environmental consultant, and Jonathan Thompson, a senior ecologicalist at Harvard Forest, which is a department of Harvard University. And they state that in New England, research published from separate studies have shown that the Northeast is warming more rapidly than other regions in the United States and faster than the global average, with a rate of climate-induced warming on course to accelerate. This is our warning. The good news that in New England, including Wakefield, we have a natural solution to climate change right under our nose. The 34 million acres of forest blanketing three-quarters of the region's land base. The solution pathways include avoid deforestation, increase wildlife preserves, improve management, increasing tree canopy and forest cover in cities and suburbs, including Wakefield. Any proposal in Wakefield to cut down 10, 128, or even over 2,000 trees should be met with resistance because our forests are poised to be the heroes of this scenario. A key solution to the climate crisis is literally just outside our doorsteps here in Wakefield. I believe policymakers should embrace this opportunity and prioritize Wakefield's forest as indispensable tools in the fight against climate change. Any action taken by our town leaders to avoid this golden opportunity is totally, in my opinion, irresponsible. As this park is presented, I do not support this article. Thank you.
Anybody else want to go? You've already been up, right? So, yeah, so you're going to have to wait till... Yeah, okay.
Is that my turn then?
Yeah, you're up.
Hi, Tiana Veldwisch, 28 West Water Street. I'm a member of the Sustainability Committee, but speaking just personally. But I've heard about this opportunity and think that this is a time that we have to make a choice to be more sustainable. The opportunity to put solar power on the roofs of these two schools, I know that's not what we're voting on. This is just about the designation of the land. But if we can seize this opportunity to make two schools that are going to be assets of the town for decades to come more sustainable, we should be seizing every opportunity for that right now, because the trees are not going to be enough. Those 128 trees are not going to undo the damage of burning fuel to heat these schools and keep them in use for those decades. We need to be moving towards electrifying anything possible. And if this is the time to do it, we should do it and find other acres to make more habitats. I'd love to talk about the VOC location. But what we need to be doing now is making it possible to have these be fully electric and as sustainable as possible buildings for the students that are going to be here for the next decades. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, who cares to speak? Okay, you're up. Two minutes, second time around. Oh, okay, sorry.
Newcomer. Good morning. Mike Scullo, 7 Swain Place. I support this article. And I really like to commend the town and Wakefield Gas and Light on their forward thinking. I think it's very progressive, as the woman who just spoke so eloquently before me suggested that this really, it really puts us on the map as a leader in terms of sustainability. So please join me in voting yes for this article.
Any first timers? Have you gone already?
No.
Well, then you can't go again until somebody-
I haven't gone yet.
Oh, you haven't gone yet?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were gone. Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi. Who are you and where do you live?
Kristen Weekly from 7 Robert Street.
Okay.
And I just wanted to voice my support for this article because I totally, I love trees. But as it was just said, it's really not enough right now. I mean, if it was enough, then we would be in a good situation. And we're really not climate-wise right now. So I think anything that we can electrify, the less carbon that we can be emitting. Obviously, I think we should all talk about like where we're going to relocate, or be able to plant more trees in town. But I mean, that's not really what we're discussing right now. So I fully support this article.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning. Jennifer Calle, 25 Sylvan Avenue. Here as a resident today, but I'm also the chair of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department Board. And one thing I wanted to point out is that this analysis, I think for the first time that I've ever seen in this town, looks at the impact of building energy use as compared to the impact of forests. And so if you look at, one of the things that we did, which we haven't really done, I think in many cases previously, is to compare the carbon impact of changing the energy use of this building with the carbon impact of cutting 128 trees. And I absolutely acknowledge that that is not the complete picture, but it's a start. And if we go back to the slide where you can see those carbon impacts, the results are illuminating and difficult to process. What we see is that the carbon impact of the schools vastly outweighs the carbon impact of the trees. And as other people have mentioned, that is difficult to process, but it is something we do need to process and deal with. At the end of the day, I believe this project is absolutely necessary for all of the trees in this community, the other trees in this community and in the world, for the animals on this planet, including the human beings as well. And I think that the net-net, at the end of the day, the benefits of doing this project vastly outweigh the costs. It's a very difficult finding, but I do believe that that is true, and I hope you'll join me in supporting this project. Thank you.
I'm next.
Morning. Tom Batcher, 25 Wakefield Ave. I as well am a commissioner on the Gas and Light Board. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not as the board. The board did vote unanimously for this. We did extensive studies around the carbon impacts of the schools going natural gas. It is unfortunate, the removal of the 128 trees. The, you know, carbon impact of that is three metric tons. The savings of the schools are 2,600 metric tons annually. Again, my colleague Jen Calle eloquently said the impacts are just immense long-term going forward. I urge you to vote yes, both from a financially savings, environmental savings, and educational benefits of this park. Thank you.
Thank you. You're up.
David Knudsen, 10 Eaton Street. I'm not speaking as a member of a board. I'm speaking as an individual, not on any of the boards. And you would be hard-pressed to find somebody who's more concerned about climate change than I am. I also have a 16-panel solar installation on my roof, and it's been in place for about six years. The report that I'm getting on its production is that it's already the equivalent of planting 300 trees, over 300 trees. I think other emotional considerations are weighing into this discussion, and we should try not to let those outweigh the numbers involved here. As previous speakers said, the impact of these two schools being electrified is tremendous. The amount of land we're talking about deforesting is one acre, which is really not a very large amount. It's proposed to be replaced. And I guess the second point I want to make is that people are commenting about not being offered enough time to consider the fine points of this. One thing that is abundantly clear is this is not a simple project to get completed. And I really commend the people involved with this for having put the energy in to make all the pieces come together. There are a lot of moving parts. This is not the sort of thing that can be completely solved by simple citizen involvement. It really needs the dedicated attention of professionals. What we're trying to decide is the overall outcome. We're trying to make a decision about the benefits of the project, not micromanage it. And I fully support the project. I really hope people can keep the bigger picture in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Axelrod, 19 Sheffield Road. I do not sit on any board for environmental energy or any commission, but I can look at a map. And what I'm curious about is if the vocational school had been placed at a different location, let's say in the middle of one of those grass spaces, would we be having this conversation? Would this be a controversy? Would people be upset? First question. Second question is, why are we voting on this before an analysis on the location of the school has been done, when if the school was on the big grass space, this would be a non-issue? The project clearly is amazing. It has a long-term benefits for our town, our environment, and, you know, we're going to be leaders. It's amazing. But why are we putting the cart before the horse? Why are we not using common sense? Why don't we, you know, all the fertilizer and dead space on either of those grass fields would be an ideal location for the school and for the generators? And then the controversy's over. So take a step back and use some common sense, and don't knock down the trees for the school. Use the grass field that's already open. Thank you.
Still on?
Okay.
Hi, Julie Scott, 4 Central Street. The project is amazing. I have some questions, though, about, obviously, we're struggling with this project for a lot of reasons. We, Wakefield, are losing trees. We, Wakefield, are affected more than the communities who send the students there to the vocational school. I'm wondering, have we discussed how we would be compensated? Obviously, we're going to be maintaining this park. Our employees will be paid to maintain this park. That comes from our town budget. We have, is it 16 communities that go to the vocational school? 12. Have those communities been reached out to as far as maybe benefiting Wakefield students who now will be going to the VOC? We're giving up an awful lot. Is Wakefield, have we negotiated any sort of compensation for what we might be giving up?
Who can answer that? Is the VOC involved somehow in a decision about our local electric company?
No, they're not. Well, the benefit is to, obviously, all the ratepayers, based on the fact that we've designed this to include the solar, the battery, the generator. So the ratepayers of Wakefield are benefiting from that savings that I talked about in terms of capacity savings. That's the payback for us.
I think the question is, is there any involvement with the VOC?
We've been working very closely with the VOC, but in terms of them making a cash payment, the building project is set by the state building authority and how that all happens. The reason we've started to work with them more closely was the fact that they wanted to go all gas, and we needed to try to convince them to go all electric. So we've been working very closely. Part of that was taking the need for a generator at the school away and putting it in a central location for both. So that, by putting it all under one site, we're able to generate benefits to Wakefield that way.
I get that. But the vocational school and the students who are going there and the families-
Look, maybe I have the question. Does the VOC pay us for their energy?
Yes, they do.
There you go. So it's a bill, not a party. So I think that's, is that, your question is, what's the involvement of the VOC, right?
I would like to know if there is, we're giving up something. I know our ratepayers are benefiting, but all of the communities who send their students there is Wake-
Wait, we send them a bill and they pay it. You know, they don't have any say.
We're paying $12 million, but are the families of the students who are going to the VOC?
No, I guess the answer's no, right, Peter?
The other communities, the students from the other communities are also getting a huge benefit. I'm just looking, I support the project, but I'm also wondering, is, our employees will be maintaining that?
Our municipal light and gas department will be maintaining-
And we will be paying their salaries.
Right. Yeah. And then, here's the VOC, send them a bill, they pay it. So I don't understand what you're looking for, participation. Can you answer? Do you know that, Mr. Batcher? Do you have an answer to that?
Tom Batcher, 25 Wakefield Ave. I would say that this is no different than any other generation asset that Wakefield Gas and Light owns and operates. It benefits all of us as ratepayers, including the VOC and the high schools. So we build these type of assets to support our electric and gas infrastructure. So it is a capital project within the gas and light budget.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have you gone already?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
Benny Wheat, 44 Miriam Street. So I have a question, which I think was partially already asked, and I didn't totally understand the answer, and I have like additional questions about it. So I understand that the analysis hasn't been completed about what would be a fully ecologically equivalent site to replace what we are losing at this site, not just the number of tree trunks, you know, and leaves, but the ecological equivalence. And so my question is, one, who is responsible for making that decision about what the equivalency is going to be, like what site will have ecological equivalence? And two, my guess is that there is no other site that is ecologically equivalent that just like happens to be lying around that we could transfer the use of. It will have to be taking a site that is not ecologically equivalent and building that, you know, building that up over time because, you know, planting trees, it takes time for them to grow. The ecological benefits of that takes time. It's like a complex system that has to grow over time. So who is responsible for kind of overseeing and shepherding that process and making sure that we're not just pointing to some other piece of land that the town owns and saying like, okay, that's the land, it's one acre, but actually creating, out of a site that is not ecologically equivalent, creating a site that is? So who's responsible for that over time?
Attorney McCarthy. I think you kind of, so it's the state environmental, and then, let me just, I think point two is rhetorical. We don't know that yet, so that would be-
No, it's not rhetorical. I have a question.
Well, no, okay, it's in that, well, okay, it's too speculative. I just don't want you up there.
So E O E A has the Article 97 policy. So all the information, both in terms of what property is designated to compensate for the loss of the one acre, as well as Conservation Commission input, as well as public input, would be funneled into the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. They'll do what they do, and they'll make a recommendation to, I believe, both the legislature and the governor as to what action they should take in relation to approving the transfer of the land. So E O E A is the answer.
And so then, who's responsible, after the land is transferred, who's responsible for building up that ecological value, if it's not currently of an equivalent ecological value?
I guess whomever is responsible now. I guess it's a nature, right?
Say again?
Nature? I mean, it's bare land. It will likely be wooded land in a similar condition to what it is now.
Well, but I guess I was understanding earlier in the presentation that there's a site that has like an old substation on it?
Oh, that's part of it, yeah. So we think that's a contribution generally to the town. We think it's a contribution ecologically to the town as well in decommissioning an industrial site and making it green space. But that's in addition to-
Okay.
-the land that will be offered to compensate for the one acre, which, again, is not law, but it's part of the E O E A policy, and we intend to follow it.
And so the site that the E O E A designates eventually to compensate for this site, when you say that that land would be transferred, what does that mean? It would be transferred to whom and for what purpose?
So it could be, we'll consider anything in terms of whether it's a deed into the Conservation Commission into, or there's a deed restriction for conservation purposes, or whether it's deeded generally to the town. We'll follow, you know, instruction in terms of what the best method, method of transfer and the best means of preserving it is.
Thank you. And I have one comment to make finally about those responses, which is, when you say that it is nature's responsibility to make a piece of land ecologically valuable, I find that completely unacceptable.
Yeah. I perhaps didn't answer the question satisfactorily and apologize for that if that's the case.
You're all set? Yeah.
Hi, Andy Bray, 3 Highland Ave. I'm really excited about this project. I'm definitely voting in favor of it. As an environmental engineer by training and someone who works in the sustainability field, you know, when I first heard about this project, I got really excited. I mean, there's a few things that I look at when I'm considering sustainability projects and, you know, electrification is a big one. Renewable energy, great. Locally sourced, amazing. You know, check, check, check. But then to really, as has been mentioned, look at the climate impact or benefit from the project. It's almost three orders of magnitude over the lost trees. Can't overstate that enough. And what comes with that? Well, it addresses some of the other things that have been raised. Biodiversity, ecological protection. Climate, the climate change is impacting that stuff globally. We're talking about one acre of land, but the climate benefits of this project are going to do so much more in terms of environmental protection and biodiversity. So, thank you.
Kathy Shine Kane, 33 Elm Street. I won't repeat, but I will at least try to emphasize what was said by the previous speaker and many other speakers with regard to the balance. I am grateful for the transparency, for the thoroughness, and for the extensive research and information that has been provided to us right now. I am not an expert in any of these areas. I consider myself somewhat of a tree hugger, however. In an ideal world, I wish that this could be done without removing 120 trees and the impact of that, but I also recognize that this is the reality that we live in, and I would urge my fellow Wakefield residents not to allow the perfect to interfere with achieving the good.
Good morning. Laurel Goreville, 33 Reynolds Road. I'm also on the Board of Health. Not always, we've had other priorities, but we really invite anybody with EPA background to give us advice in overall things. I just wanted to point out, in walking that area, it is not a well-maintained area at this point. We've done environmental surveys with kids and the youth council and with our youth action team. Awful lot of trash, awful lot of debris. So I'm wondering, as we speak about the passion of the health of our forests, as a town, we could do better. And I think there's a lot of places in town, in front of the pit would be one. And so as I think about this project, I am thrilled about the potential as we work through, you know, the energy needs of our future. And I would invite the town, I'm so happy to see the passion about this, to really push back on kind of a micro level of where we can do better everywhere else in town. We have a lot of corridors in this town that could be better, and we could certainly enhance trees, for instance, on Water Street, where we have a lot of blight going on right now. So I'm just hoping that the passion that's going into this conversation invites a bigger conversation about the whole town, how we look at the balance, how it impacts public health and mental health, because certainly, healthy trees that aren't covered with trash is better for us all. And I fully support this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes.
I really support the Energy Park project, but when I look at that map and I see those athletic fields, those parking lots, all those other already cleared spaces, it's really hard for, that are near the road, that meet some of the criteria, maybe not every single parameter that you identified, but a lot of them. It's hard for me to believe that there's not another spot on that map that could have, you know, been the site of the Energy Park. It really is. I was going to make a motion to postpone this vote. I don't want to stand up here, you know, being known as the person who voted against the Energy Park or put a motion against the Energy Park. I really don't. That's a very hard thing to do. But in lieu of that, maybe I can just ask Mr. McCarthy, as the attorney for the Gas and Light Department, that they will take the recommendations of the Conservation Commission, who I feel should have been consulted before all of this, for adequate replacement land of equal or greater natural resource value to this. And they will find it, and they will put that forth in the petition, because we can't just go on, you know, yeah, we're going to try our best, or, you know, we're going to look around. No, we have to have a commitment that that replacement land of equal or greater natural resource value will be identified and that the Conservation Commission will help them guide that process. Can I ask that of Mr. McCarthy?
Ten seconds. Ten seconds. Mr. McCarthy, can you answer that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, that's our intention. That's our point.
We will do that.
Yes.
What took you so long? Miss sustainability.
I had to hear what everyone was saying. Hi, Julie Smith Galvin, 28 Grafton Street, Wakefield Town Councilor. I, I think I speak on behalf of the town council. This came before us on September 28th. We listened to all of the details. We expressed very many of the same concerns that are being expressed here today, and we, I don't think we voted, but we certainly feel very strongly that this should move forward. This is, we need to take 51 billion tons a year of greenhouse gases out of our environment globally. I know this is just a small thing that we can do as a town, but this makes a tremendous, tremendous impact. We also put $1.4 million into our parks and tree program here in Wakefield. We've been multiple years have been a tree city. We had Dennis Fazio, who runs our tree program at town council on Monday, and we are consistently planting more trees than we are taking down. We just dedicated $150,000 from our ARPA funding for more trees. We, as a town, really do care about trees, but we also need to make the climate change. We also need to avert a climate disaster. The park at Burns will be a tremendous value. We need to look at it from a natural resources. I understand there's not as many habitats there, but that is an area where there's lots of high-rise buildings. It's close to an environmental justice area. If we could make a pocket park there with lots of trees, it would have a, a big impact on the community, on cooling, and while sequestering carbon as well. So I, I won't belabor it, but we can do more today with one yes vote on this article than any of us can individually do. And without a planet, I'm sorry, but there is no habitat. So we need to vote yes on Article 5. Thank you.
And you are?
I'm Mike McLean, 19 Fairmount Ave.
Thank you.
A member of the town council, but as a Wakefield citizen as well, I just wanted to try to clarify, hopefully clarify, a couple of questions that were raised, including that from Benny Wheat. The town owns land. The Gas and Light owns land. We don't know what is going to be required at a Gas and Light when they go forward under this Article 97. However, the, it is quite possible that it's not just going to be a requirement after they talk to the Conservation Commission and they, and they go to the Commonwealth, that they're only going to offer the, the park, the smaller park that's referred to, potential park, because they also have land. They have fully forested land, some 12, 13 acres up off of Farm Street, and at the bottom of that is their current battery park, which is, whether you know it or not, is saving us all money regularly. So it's possible that in the future, they will be required to do more, and it's not just going to be the job of nature. It may very well be that the Commonwealth would require something like an existing forested area owned by the Gas and Light to be designated in perpetuity. So I'm just saying that that is a possibility. It's not just going to be potentially nature. We don't know what's going to happen there, but I just wanted to bring up that there may be more required by the Commonwealth than we know today, because we don't know what's, what the Commonwealth is going to require. Thank you.
Two minutes.
I can do that. This question basically for Mr. Deion. If this proposal goes through, as far as the solar panels on the high school and the solar panels on the vocational school, will the light department own those or rent them or lease them? And also, what is the life expectancy of the, those panels and their use?
Typically, the life expectancy for most are 20 years, and the, the output of those solar panels will go 100% to each school's offset their electric, electric use first, and then the overflow would go back to the Energy Park itself. And in terms of own versus leased, we're still going to evaluate that. That's one of the things we talked about in terms of our financing the project, but the benefits will be operated 100% by the light department. And again, the first output would be to the schools themselves, only whatever overflows would come back to the grid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So a lot of the conversation today has pitted building the Energy Park against the value of the 128 trees that will be cut down, which I think is somewhat of a false dichotomy, and I feel sad that that's the choice that the voters of Wakefield are being presented with. Research is coming out that planting new trees as a strategy for replacing mature forests is not a sustainable strategy for the earth. I wish that land that has already been cleared and developed could have been identified so that we weren't being presented with this choice today between cutting down mature forests and building a sustainable energy park. So I would encourage people to keep that in mind, that that is not a sustainable strategy, and if we agree to that today, why would we not continue on that path? That's not ultimately sustainable for our environment.
Thank you. Hurry up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Chines, 34 Hopkins Street, and a member of the town council. I, I just want to echo the comments that Councilor Smith Galvin made about our support for, for this article. And I would say that's not support that was granted lightly. We are very mindful of the fact that, you know, any removal of trees is something that we want to avoid. But unfortunately, as one of the previous speakers said, you know, we often aren't presented with a perfect choice, a choice where it's abundantly clear which side you land on and which side you don't. We have to make choices, we have to make compromise, and we have to make decisions that involve pros and cons on either side. And so as I look at this decision, I think the pros and cons are clear, and the con, there are cons. I acknowledge that, and I think the loss of trees, we would all say, is one of those cons. But when you look at the amount of carbon that we take out of the environment if both schools are electrified, an amount of carbon that will actually reduce over time as we start to use more solar and renewable sources for electricity relative to the carbon impact of the 128 trees, it's not even close. We're talking about taking about 900 times the carbon out of the atmosphere as the trees are offsetting today. And one of the things that we've got to be mindful of is, as the environment gets warmer, as climate change hits us, it doesn't matter if we preserve forests if the environment can't sustain those forests going forward. Part of protecting habitats in Wakefield is making sure that we do our part to take carbon out of the environment. This is also a no-brainer, quite frankly, from a cost standpoint. It does involve an investment of resources on the part of the Gas and Light Department, and really acknowledge our Gas and Light Commission for putting, putting resources in place for that. But what it does is it also saves us both construction costs for both schools, which we know are going to be a lot of money, and it saves us money each and every year in terms of electrical use. It's a great long-term investment. I encourage everyone to vote yes and move this forward.
Is there anyone else? All right. Motion before you is to approve the easement as set forth under Article 5. This is a two-thirds vote, and we're, clearly, it's not going to be unanimous. Okay, so the tellers are up. Where are the, where are the Watts? There you go. Oh, the Watts-Houghton, sorry. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Keep your hand in the air until you're sure your vote has been counted. We're going to call that the north, because that's like, that's North Ave going that way. So we'll call that north. That'll be the south. All opposed. Keep your hand in the air until you're sure you, your vote has been counted. Got to keep your hand up in the air until, until it's all over.
Five in the north.
Tom, you have the numbers? Fifteen. Motion carries. Okay. Article six, is somebody going to make a motion on this? Yeah. So, yeah.
Good morning again. I'm Theo Knoll, chairman of the, chair, rather, of the planning board. Out of respect for everyone's time and attention, we ask to indefinitely postpone, warrant Article 6, which is a proposed bylaw to add a street name change policy and process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, actually, no debate on that, is there, Mr. Mullin? All right.
I have 30 seconds to advertise.
Sure. It's a strict 30.
Yeah, 30, all right. I do want to thank the members of the planning board, Jim Hogan, Matt Lowery, Megan Manassale, Bill Spalding, and our Community and Economic Development Director, Aaron Kokinda, for all of their thoughtful work and research to develop this proposed change. We have a solid proposal, and we're requesting this indefinite postponement because we want to incorporate the thoughtful edits from the newly formed Wakefield Bylaw Review Committee, which was not able to provide comments until after we submitted the article. Incorporating these comments represents the best of Wakefield town and board government with two boards working together in Wakefield's common interest. We intend to resubmit for your positive consideration at the May 2023 town meeting with all of these changes incorporated. This is not going to delay the planning board's work on our 2033 master plan process and our continuing analysis of the new MBTA Communities Law. As the previous discussion shows, representation and citizen participation is so critical, and we are grateful for everyone's participation in Wakefield. We invite you to attend our planning board meetings and make your voice heard. I appreciate, thank you.
You got a little promo then at the end there, huh? Got a little promo then at the end there, huh? Planning board needs accounting lesson, or you went to, then you went to civics. All in favor, this motion's still on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Maryne.
Before, before I move on, somebody left their keys up here. Car, come here and claim it. Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve this town meeting with thanks to the town clerk, town administrator, WCAT, and the people of Wakefield.
Second. Second. Before we vote, as always, WCAT, fantastic job. I mean, they, they really do. Speaking of promoting, they're an invaluable asset in this town, and I really appreciate it's so great to work with them. All in favor? All opposed? To echo Mr. Knoll, thank you very much for coming and participating in town government. Thanks.